January 2021 meeting of the Niskuna zoning board of appeals to order. And the recording is going? Okay. If we could please call the roll.
Mr. Frary?
Here.
Mr. Latif?
Here.
Ms. McGinnis?
Here.
Mr. Beg?
Here.
Mr. Green?
Here.
Mr. Hope?
Here.
Chairman Goodman?
Present, thank you. The first order of business would be approval of the minutes from November 2020. Anyone like to make a motion?
Chairman, I'd like to make a motion to accept the minutes.
Okay. Motion has been made, is there a second?
I'll second.
Motion's been made and seconded, is there any discussion on the motion? Hearing none, I would ask if we could please call the roll.
Mr. Frary?
I'm staying.
Mr. Latif?
Yes.
Ms. McGinnis?
Yes.
Mr. Beg?
Stand.
Mr. Green?
Yes.
Mr. Hope?
Yes.
And Chairman Goodman?
Yes. Motion is carried, the minutes are approved. I would ask if we could please call the first case?
Oh, God. I didn't bring that home with me. I knew there was something I missed. Um, I have. I have something I can read. The appeal of Evan Love for a variance from section 220-13 Schedule IB of the zoning ordinance of the town of Niskuna as it applies to the property at 1039 Valerie Drive, Niskuna, New York, located in the R1 low-density residential zoning district to construct a 12-foot by 16-foot garage addition partially within the side yard setback. Section 220-13 Schedule IB requires a 20-foot minimum side yard setback as proposed. The garage addition would be located 11.9 feet from the side property line. Therefore, an 8-foot, 8.1-inch, 8.1-foot side yard setback variance is required. We sent out six notices and I received zero responses. Laura, did you receive any?
I did not receive any responses, but we do have requests from a couple people that are intended to the meeting and I'm not sure which case they wish to speak on.
Okay. I would ask if the applicant could come forward? Please set forth what your application is, the reason for the application, and what efforts were made, if any, to mitigate either the need of a variance or the size of the variance.
Thank you, Chairman. This is Evan Love. Uh, I appreciate your opportunity to speak to the commission. I have requested a variance for a 12-long, or a 12-wide by 16-long adjacent garage, which would reduce the setback from 20 to 8. I have contacted my neighbor who I have very good relations with, uh, last name Nuqui, N-U-Q-U-I, requesting he contact the board or Ms. Robertson with his concurrence. She obviously did not receive that, but I did request that. This is a, uh, this is a adjacent, uh, one car, uh, on the street on the Valerie Drive. You have an additional property, 1051, that has a third stall as well. Also on Pine Crest, you have a recent construction that is pretty close to the adjacent property line as well, so I'm sure that required a variance, but looks great and, uh, I believe that was approved, or of course it was approved, he built it. So that is my, uh, that is my, uh, submittal at this time.
Okay. Can you just, for the board, set forth what you may have done to see if, what you could do to minimize the need of a variance?
So I appreciate that. I considered, um, the option for putting the third vehicle, which is probably going to be a family member displaced by COVID, elderly family member that has a vehicle. I considered the road, you know, putting her vehicle on the road. You know, our neighborhood is, um, has a standard of sorts. That would not, uh, be consistent with the standard of the neighborhood. Uh, I could leave that vehicle in the driveway permanently. Also does not quite fit with the standard and the hope would be I could sort of conceal that and not, and maintain the, uh, appearance of this beautiful neighborhood. We could put her vehicle in storage if she was not driving. I think we're talking 200 to 300 a month for storage of her vehicle and she's still able in her early 80s. So that is what I've, uh, that is what I've, uh, attempted.
Okay, thank you. Are there any questions from the board?
Yeah, a couple of questions, Mr. Chairman. First question, you have a two-door garage?
Uh, Mr. Chairman, this is a single?
Single, okay. So you have a single and you put in another single?
No, sir, we have an existing, uh, two, which is similar to the neighborhood, most have twos. And the, uh, distinct, uh, I'm sorry, the, uh, additional single would be 12-wide, which is a minimum to accommodate the, uh, doors that are available.
Okay, it's gonna be 12 by 16?
Yes, sir, that is the proposal.
Okay. And is this gonna be connected to the existing garage?
Well, the intent is to include a pass-through. That is a, uh, a 30, probably a 36-wide door by eight feet. But it will not be, I would say blended or connected with the existing. It'll be as tight as you can be, um, given the siding that's there, but it's not gonna be a, an extension, if you will. It'll be tight against though.
Okay, it'll be tight next to it. And how far would it be from the other garage?
It would, it would end up, uh, from the adjacent, the neighbor.
Uh, no, yours first.
Yeah, it'll be, it'll be tight against, it'll be flush.
Okay, it'll be flush?
Yes, sir.
And, uh, how far is it from your next garage?
Uh, that would convert from a existing 20 to, uh, to about eight.
Okay. And, uh, last question, your neighbor, the, uh, 1051, is that the one next door or is it up the street?
No, no, sir, that is up the street a little bit. That is three properties up.
Okay.
I, I bring that up to just demonstrate that there is existing three units, uh, in the neighborhood. No, the existing property, Mr. N-U-Q-U-I, Nuqui, is 1043 and, uh, it would convert to a, from a 20 setback to an eight setback.
Okay. Okay, and they have, uh, only a single garage or two?
Uh, no, he also has a double. I would say in, on Valerie, most of you guys and gals are familiar with the neighborhood. I, I would say that there's, there's all doubles, minimum doubles, yeah.
Okay, and the last question I have for you, you said you spoke to a neighbor, is that the neighbor right next to you?
Yes, sir, Mr. Nuqui, I requested that he give his, um, opinion.
Okay.
Positive or negative to Ms. Robertson today.
Okay, since we haven't heard, what was your conversation with him?
No, it was strict, it was strictly email and he and I are pretty tight, we're pretty close, um, we do a lot for each other. His, his son is in the military, I was involved in that. Uh, we just, we're just a really good interaction between he and I.
So in the email between you and him, he didn't have any issues with it?
Well, we didn't see a response yet, I appreciate that, just to be, you know, fully candid, we, we did not have a response yet.
All right, thank you, that's all I have, thank you very much.
Yes, sir.
Are there other questions from the board?
I have one for, uh, perhaps, uh, Ms. Robertson. Is, is this neighbor on notice of this evening's proceedings?
Yes, yeah, he would be notified. I was just checking my spam just to make sure it wasn't caught up in my spam and I, I don't have anything from them, but they were given a notice in the mail delivered to their mailbox.
About a week and a half ago, right, Ms. Robertson?
Yeah.
And if I may, uh, Mr. Love, I'm Richard Green. As, uh, as you're facing the front of the house and, uh, looking to the left, is that where your current, uh, garage exists?
Uh, the garage is on the far right, Mr. Green.
Thank you, and as you look further to the right, that's where you're proposing?
Yes, sir, we included photographs, don't know if you're in possession of those, um, but yes, exactly, and the ten is to blend nicely architecturally, aesthetically, so that you, you, when you drive by, you can't tell anything unusual has occurred.
Yep, and may I further inquire, if you will allow me to? As you're looking at the front of your house, looking to the right, looking to the area? I know, I've seen the photographs, I've driven by, I appreciate that.
Yep.
I've, actually, I've driven by, uh, and I appreciate it and, uh, yep, there's the, there's the arrow, thank you. As you're looking to the, not as shown in the photograph, but in reality, as you look to the right, what is on, uh, the wall that faces your neighbor's property for the record? Is it a kitchen, is it a bedroom?
No, no, that, that's actually the garage, so you're talking about my neighbor's wall or my wall?
Neighbor's wall.
Yeah, neighbor's wall is his garage as well.
Thank you, I just wanted to get that into the record, thank you so much, Mr. Love.
Yep, copy, copy that.
Captain Love, my name is Keith Frary, thank you for your service, by the way.
Yes, sir, thank you for your support.
I'm, I'm looking at the photographs you provided and it looks like the, um, driveway ends at the second of the two garage doors. Is there a plan to, to provide some kind of driveway access to the addition?
Affirmative. Um, good, good observation, um, the intent is to blend a very small, how do we describe this? Additional, yes, thank you, additional section that, that services that, that door, that nine-foot door, however, you know, it's my issue, not yours, but there's a, there's a sprinkler hub. So something would have to be done, but yes, it's gonna be a, almost non-visible subtle, if you will, blending, just going over to that door and I don't think that vehicle's gonna use that often, so I, that may even take a while, just even get to that point.
So the plan is, is pretty much this addition would be used for, uh, storage of that vehicle?
Well, yeah, absolutely, affirmative.
Okay, thank you.
Any other questions from the board? Hearing none, I would ask if there's any members of the public who wish to be heard for or against the application? Hearing none, I would ask if any members of the board wish to make a motion?
Uh, this is, uh, Kamran, I'll make the motion to approve, uh, because as the captain has indicated that he's looked at other alternatives and there's not a, any, uh, good viable alternative other than storing the car somewhere else off-site, uh, which would preclude, uh, the person from being able to use it when she wants to, when she or he wants to. And as far as, uh, undesirable change to the neighborhood, uh, it actually probably is a better thing to put the garage in, uh, and if it's going to blend in with the rest of the building, uh, it'll also not, uh, you know, get the car stored properly instead of being on the driveway or, uh, on the road. So I think it'll, it'll probably, uh, be more positive. The variance, uh, is substantial in that it takes up half the setback, but the thing is, uh, since the neighbor, uh, is not complaining or is concerned about it and the neighbor seems to have enough room, they're also, they have their 20 feet still there and it's also, uh, like, uh, Mr. Green had pointed out, uh, that it's next to the garage, uh, so it's not going to, uh, cause any privacy issues with the neighbor. And then as far as, uh, I, I don't think there are any environmental effects and the captain has indicated that they're gonna make sure that the garage is built, uh, with the same architectural finish that the current building is, so it, it should not, uh, detract from the appearance of the, uh, building. The difficulty, uh, I guess it's self-created, but, uh, you know, uh, it's, it's kind of, uh, like you mentioned, driven by, uh, COVID, having, uh, this person to move in, uh, with them, so, uh, you know, he's looking for a solution and I think it's, it's a viable solution. So for, for those reasons, I would say, uh, we should go ahead and approve it.
There's been a motion that has been made, is there a second?
I'll second for the reasons stated.
Motion's been made and seconded, is there any discussion on the motion? Hearing none, I would ask if the court could please call the roll?
Mr. Frary?
Yes.
Mr. Latif?
Yes, for the reasons stated.
Ms. McGinnis?
Yes.
Mr. Beg?
Yes.
Mr. Green?
Yes, for the reasons stated.
Mr. Hope?
Yes, for the reasons stated.
Chairman Goodman?
Yes, for the reasons stated, the motion carries, the variance is granted. I want to thank you for your time this evening.
Yes, sir, us as well.
Thank you.
Thank you for your service, sir.
Thanks for your support, all of you.
You're welcome.
If we could please call the next case?
Appeal of Emily Campito and Jeremy Snapkowski for, uh, variance from section 220-18 B3B and section 220-13 Schedule IB of the zoning ordinance of the town of Niskuna as it applies to the property at 2182 Fox Hill Drive, Niskuna, New York, located in the R1 low-density residential zoning district to construct a 16-foot by 34-foot pool partially within the rear yard setback. Section 220-18 B3B states that the required side and rear yard dimensions for major accessory structures shall be the same as applies to the principal building. As defined, major accessory structures or detached accessory buildings or other structures in excess of 120 square feet, the pool at 544 square feet is a major accessory structure. Section 220-13 Schedule IB establishes the rear setback minimum of 25 feet. As proposed, the pool will be located 17.9 feet from the rear property line. Therefore, a 7.1-foot rear yard setback variance is required. Nine notices were mailed out, zero responses.
I would ask if the applicant could please come forward, set forth your application, the reasons for it, and any efforts that were made, if any, to mitigate either the need of a variance or the size of the variance?
Hi, yes, this is Jeremy Snapkowski, I'm here with my wife, Emily Campito, uh, thank you for, uh, hearing our case. So we're requesting to, uh, put in an in-ground pool, uh, like was stated, uh, we would need to, uh, press a variance of 7.1 feet into the 25-foot, uh, rear setback. Just with the, uh, shape of our, uh, property and the existing, uh, deck, uh, rather limited on where it would, uh, be able to fit in our yard, um, pretty much any of the standard-sized in-ground pools, uh, would go into that rear setback, uh, and we were really, uh, looking for a pool that would have a deep end for, uh, the activities that we planned on doing, uh, which lead you to the minimum of, uh, 16 feet width, which is getting us into that rear setback. We were looking to have the pool be a little bit closer to the deck, uh, but in conversations with the contractor, uh, he needs, uh, five feet, uh, from where the edge of the pool will be, uh, to the deck for excavation purposes, uh, so that kind of put us at that, that five feet from the existing deck. We did, uh, talk to our neighbors, uh, both ones directly next toward us at 2186, uh, who will be, uh, will be right at that, uh, side yard setback to them, uh, they have no concerns, and then we also talked to our neighbors, uh, at Seven Crimson Oaks, uh, Fort, uh, Fort, sorry, um, who are our rear neighbors, uh, they also don't have any concerns, uh, and realistically, they won't be able to even see the pool, there's quite a bit of, uh, woods between our houses, uh, so even now in the, uh, winter, you can barely see the houses between us, so, uh, that really won't be impacting their view at all.
Okay, thank you. Are there questions from anyone on the board?
Yes, uh, you know, uh, one of the pictures or the drawings of the pool show the crosshatch area around the pool, what is that?
So that is, uh, concrete decking around the pool?
So is, uh, and I'm not sure if that's considered part of the structure or is it separate from, considered from the pool, uh, Laura, can you clarify that? Because then we would have a side setback issue too, if, if that's considered part of the structure.
We measure to the water, so the apron of the pool is not considered.
Okay.
Any other questions from the board?
Yeah, quick question, Mr. Snapowski, is it, did I say it right?
Uh, Snapkowski, but pretty, pretty good, it's tough.
Uh, just a quick question, you mentioned, uh, the shape of your property and, uh, and the only reason I want you to clarify to us, uh, about the shape of property, I do see it in the image that you submitted, uh, but if you can tell us, because it looks like one corner, you're only, uh, 2-point-something far back from the side and the other side a little longer. So can you describe it a little to us, the, the situation, because your pool is not an oval, it's a straight line, correct?
Correct, yeah, so, uh, the, if you're looking at the house, the, uh, far left, uh, rear property corner, um, does not go parallel to that back of the house to the back right property line, uh, so the way we were, uh, placing the pool would have it be parallel to the house and the deck, um, even if you tried to move the pool, uh, farther to the right in the, in the picture shown, uh, you would run into, uh, issues with the rear prop, uh, rear setback there, as well as the pool would then start to not be behind the house.
Right, so, so to be clear, on, on one corner, the only, the only request you're having 2.6 there is that a 7.1, correct?
Correct.
So, and then it goes down, when you get, uh, is that the front of your house, when it, when you go down, what's in that corner, is that a garage?
Uh, that, there's a shed in the back right corner of the property at the setback lines.
Okay, so if you go down that corner toward the shed, then that's where you're, uh, you're increasing 7.1?
Correct.
Okay, so at some point, it start 2.6 and it, it start going up because of the shape of your property?
Correct.
Okay, and, uh, next question, did you try to look at, um, like, alternative, different kind of pools, like an oval pool, instead of having a straight pool or anything like this, just, uh, just curious if you did?
Yeah, uh, we looked at different pool shapes, um, pretty much 16 feet is pretty standard width for pools, if not larger, typically ovals or, uh, circular ones, uh, in-ground or even wider, so that'd probably be even greater, uh, going into the setback.
Okay, and, uh, the deck that you were talking about, it's already there, it exists?
Yes.
Okay, uh, and you said, uh, the builder said they need five feet between the deck and the pool?
Correct.
And how about another side, what are they gonna do on the other side, are they gonna have something around the pool?
Uh, so, there'll be, uh, about three feet of, um, concrete around for a walkway around the pool on all sides.
Okay, and, uh, last question I have for you, uh, I know you said there's a lot of trees, people can't see and so on, how about fencing for the pool, do you have a fence in there?
We don't have existing fencing yet, we're talking with the fencing company now, uh, and we're looking at either, uh, a 54-inch, uh, fence or a six-foot fence, uh, around the, uh, border of the outside of the, or the back of the property.
Okay, but in, in the meantime, you do not have any fencing?
Correct.
Okay, thank you, that's all I have.
Any other questions from the board?
May I inquire, Mr. Chairman?
Yes.
Uh, I'm interested in, uh, description of the, uh, buffered trees that you referenced, are they fir trees or are they trees that lose leaves? What you got back there?
Uh, most of them are, uh, trees that lose leaves, there are some, uh, pine trees in between, um, act, uh, yeah, it's, uh, you can, like, right now, uh, if you look out the window, I can see the lights if they're on in the back of the house of that neighbor, um, but in the, once the leaves are there, you can't see anything.
Now, what's the depth of the, uh, area of the trees?
Um.
Just approximate, that's all I'm looking for.
I would guess 100 feet.
All right, and may I ask a further question, changing topics a little bit? With this pool, uh, I have, uh, seen, uh, there being accessories to pools, um, and I'm wondering, uh, what thought, if any, you might have given to, uh, the placement of a, a pool shed or, uh, other pool accessory? And if so, uh, where are you thinking of putting it? And more specifically, uh, would you comment upon whether that would be in between the area of the side of the pool and the side yard in your next-door neighbor?
Yes, um, so, we're not looking for a shed or anything, we would have the, uh, pump for the pool, uh, we are looking to do that, um, on the side of the house, uh, closer to the one neighbor on the side, um, it will be, uh, pretty close to, right next to our existing air conditioning unit, uh, so it's kind of having that utility little area right there, right next to the house.
Yes, and, and is that, uh, is indicated on the, uh, diagram that you provided us?
Yes, that's on, uh, at least one of the diagrams.
So as you're facing the front of the house, it's on the left-hand side, but it's in the area of where there is already an air conditioning unit, correct?
Correct.
How high would this, uh, unit be?
Um, they're about three feet.
And how, how high is the air conditioning unit?
Uh, about the same.
Thank you. You know, I appreciate the courtesy of your time and your answers, thank you.
Thank, thank you for the questions.
Other questions from the board? Hearing none, I would ask if there's any members of the public who wish to be heard for or against the application? Hearing none, I would ask if any members of the board wish to make a motion?
Mr. Chairman, I'm gonna make a motion, uh, we approved this variance, uh, and the applicant looked at, uh, other ways to, uh, accomplish, uh, what he wants to establish and having a pool, um, I don't see, uh, any other way, uh, that he can, uh, uh, make this happen without the way he did it, uh, it's a nice clean, uh, setup that he, he's proposing, uh, it's not gonna cause any, uh, undesirable change to the neighborhood in any way, uh, and it looks like, uh, the request is, uh, substantial on one side and then it gets reduced to a smaller size on the other side, this is due to the shape of the property. Uh, would, uh, this request have any adverse physical, uh, environment? It will not have any, any problem with environment, it looks like, uh, uh, the town will, uh, be looking for the drainage and all the stuff, so, uh, this is known from previous proposal. I think, um, the applicant looked at all the options and this is gonna be the best way for them to have the pool and that property, uh, surrounded with, uh, cement work and so on, so I make a motion to approve it.
There's been a motion made, is there a second for the motion? There's been a motion made. Is there a second for the motion? Mr. Frary, you're speaking, but you're on mute.
Thank you. This is Keith Frary, and I will second the motion for all the reasons stated.
Motion's been made and seconded. Any discussion on the motion? Hearing none, I would ask if we could please call the roll?
Mr. Frary?
Yes.
Mr. Latif?
Yes.
Ms. McGinnis?
Yes.
Mr. Beg?
Yes.
Mr. Green?
Yes, for the reasons stated.
Mr. Hoak?
Yes.
Chairman Goodman?
For the reasons stated, I'll vote yes. I want to thank you for your time this evening. The motion is carried and the variance is granted. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
All right, good luck.
Well, thanks.
Thank you.
Do we have other business before the board tonight? Hearing none, I would ask if anyone would like to make a motion to adjourn?
I'll make a motion to adjourn the meeting.
Motion's been made. Is there a second?
Second.
All in favor, signify by saying aye. Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? We stand adjourned. I want to thank everyone for your time this evening.
Thank you. Thank, happy new year.
Happy new year.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman and fellow board members. It's good to see everyone. And it's good to see, of course, our hard work in-